Good evening, everyone. We're ready to get started. Welcome to the February 2024 Hoboken Board of Education meeting. We appreciate all of you for being here. For those of you who may want to speak this evening on agenda or non-agenda items, we ask that you indicate your name and address and your desire to speak in the chat, and also whether or not you will be speaking on agenda items or non-agenda items. Ms. Lopez, can you please read the statement of compliance?
Yes. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 5th, 2024. If any member, if any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on CATV, Channel 77, and Fios, Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Ducks, which can be accessed through the District Home Beach. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communications devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting. And if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Okay, and now everyone could please stand at home for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And someone in my house needs a marker. Ms. Lopez, can we please take the roll call?
Yes. Ms. Angley.
Here.
Ms. Katamatory.
Here.
Ms. Delara. Mr. Gelator.
Here.
Mr. Ganna.
Here.
Ms. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Kupel.
I'm here.
Ms. Norwood.
Here.
And Ms. Cooper.
Here. Thank you very much, Ms. Lopez. And as I said, the 2020 flashbacks keep continuing. The next portion of our meeting is Students' Recognitions, and it's going to be for the month of December and January, which Assistant Superintendent Ms. Rodriguez Gomez will facilitate. So Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, I turn the meeting over to you.
Excellent. Thank you. Hello all, and welcome to the Student Recognition portion of our meeting. We're excited to honor these scholars tonight and learn about their accomplishments and those that they will aim for in the very near future. I extend a heartfelt welcome to the members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, community, and of course, our students and their special guests, their families. It's always such a joy to stand in front of you or be in front of you on a device and introduce our amazing principals as they come or as they appear on the screen to share detailed information and anecdotes about the students being honored here today for the months of both December and January. All of us realize that it is quite an accomplishment to be honored by your school and district community. And if you're one of the students being honored here tonight, obviously you are, please don't ever forget this moment and let it inspire many more winning moments. You are role models and peer mentors to the students in your classrooms and certainly to all of those that you pass in the hallways daily. Thank you for inspiring others and do continue to thrive in school and beyond. We're also very proud of each of you and cannot wait to hear about your academic journeys. As has been our process, we will begin with the Joseph F. Brand School and its principal, Mr. Bartlett. He will then introduce the Connors principal, Ms. Addy, and she will follow the same pattern introducing our following presenters. Principal Shannon, Principals Shannon, Sorofin, and Pica Pietra of Wallace Hoboken Middle School and Hoboken High School, respectively. Each will celebrate both of their schools' selection, and we would ask that tomorrow there be a picture opportunity during the school day. Again, thank you for being with us this evening, and with that, I would ask Principal Bartlett to take the screen.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez, for that wonderful introduction. Good evening, everyone. Superintendent Dr. Johnson, Board of Education, Community Members, Fellow Principals, and Students. I would like to begin by honoring our December Student of the Month, Lila Perry. Congratulations to Lila Perry, the Joseph F. Brand Student of the Month for December. Lila was nominated by her fifth-grade teacher, Mrs. Saluzzo. Mrs. Saluzzo said, "Lila takes pride in her work and tries hard to complete each task to the best of her ability. She is a great peer mentor, offering assistance to classmates who need extra help with their work or classroom routines." She also said, "Lila is a kind, compassionate girl who has a bright future ahead. Just stay true to yourself and believe in yourself, and you will accomplish great things." I've known Lila since she was in kindergarten at Brand School, and her story is one that makes me truly reflect on relationships, growth, and trust. I remember as a kindergartner, sometimes it was tough for Lila to come into school, and I remember getting to know her mom Renee and her father Marcus in those moments, and they would hand me a sometimes upset Lila at the front entrance, and I would always remind Lila, mom, and dad that everything would be okay. And soon enough, she began to flourish and develop the love for school. To see the growth Lila has exhibited since those days where she is now in front of the board as the Student of the Month is absolutely one of the best narratives of any student in our entire district. Words really can't encapsulate how proud we are to have Lila represent Brand here tonight. Lila is kind and accepting and makes others feel good about themselves. She pays attention during class and is able to complete her work independently or with her cooperative group. She helps her peers who need extra guidance. Lila achieved honor roll for the first marking period and is also a member of the fifth-grade Peer Mentor Program. This year, she skipped a belt in taekwondo and moved up to the next level in gymnastics. Lila's favorite hobbies are baking, teaching her little sister math, and taekwondo. Her favorite subject is math. She does especially well in her rotating math centers. Her favorite artist is Taylor Swift and favorite band is Coldplay. She wants to go to a concert one day. She has no clue about college yet, but has a plan for when she is finished with school. She wants to be a dog walker and babysitter, then work at a cafe in Paris, and figure the rest out along the way. Sounds like a fantastic plan, Lila. Lila thought of this quote from Taylor Swift when she told she would receive this honor. "No matter what happens in life, be good to people. Being good to people is a wonderful legacy to leave behind." Lila thought of it because it means that when you're nice to people, people will be nice back. When that happens, you'll feel good about yourself and will always carry that with you. You want people to remember you as a nice, kind person. We look forward to seeing how Lila expands on her legacy of kindness at Brand with us in the next months before she moves on to sixth grade. Please join me in a round of applause for Lila Perry, our Joseph F. Brand Elementary School Student of the Month for December. Congratulations again, Lila. And with that, if you could also join me in congratulating our January Student of the Month, Quentin Spurlock. Congratulations to Quentin Spurlock, the Joseph F. Brand Student of the Month for January 2024. Quentin was nominated by Mrs. Brunt, his first-grade teacher. She said, "Quentin always comes to school with a smile and a great attitude. He actively participates in all classroom discussions and shows an enthusiasm for learning. He works hard daily and is always willing to help the teacher or his classmates. He exhibits a growth mindset and always persists on challenging assignments. He works well independently and with others. Quentin has made tremendous improvement with his overall approach to listening and following directions over the course of the school year." Mrs. Brunt went on to say, "Quentin is kind, funny, and determined. I'm proud of his persistence to strive to be the best he can be every day." As a principal, there are a few moments every year that stand out above others, and I have to thank Quentin for one of those this year. Mrs. Brunt's journal question one day, a few weeks ago, was, "Would you rather have lunch with the president or the principal?" Quentin's answer was, "I would rather have lunch with the principal because me and Mr. Bartlett are good friends. I was really proud of Quentin for writing so well and for using some great inventive spelling on the big words, but I was even more proud of him for taking the time to say something that made me feel good about myself." Previously, at the marking period one academic pepper rally, Quentin received the Proud of You Award along with a fancy new brag tag to display proudly on his backpack. Quentin loves learning and is very creative. He loves to draw and color, especially pictures of Jaws. Outside of school, Quentin loves skiing, traveling, Jaws, art class, ice hockey, his family, playing on his iPad, fishing, and writing stories. When told he would receive this award, Quentin said, "I'm very proud to receive this award, and it makes me feel pretty good about myself." Well, you should feel pretty good and proud about yourself, Quentin, because we are proud of you. Please join me in a round of applause for Quentin Spurlock, the Brand School Student of the Month for January. And with that, I would like to turn the microphone over to Mrs. Juliana Addy, the principal of the Thomas G. Connors Elementary School.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bartlett. Good evening, everybody. At this time, we would like to recognize Harper Appel, who is the Connors Student of the Month for December. Congratulations to Harper Appel, the Connors Student of the Month. Harper is a fifth grader in Mr. Ortiz's class. Mr. Ortiz shared that Harper is an absolute pleasure to have in class. She excels academically and is a diligent student. She's a natural learner and observes new information like a sponge. Her exemplary work is a reflection of her admirable attitude and meritable effort. She is dedicated to her assignments and ensures that she is always putting her best foot forward. She is an attentive listener and shows outstanding participation in class. She sets ambitious goals and is always eager to commence with her work. If she does not understand something, she uses her growth mindset and her natural grit to push forward and improve. She is not shy about requesting assistance when needed. She shows compassion and respect to her peers, teachers, and school administration. Although she prefers independence when working, she is an excellent peer resource for her classmates and always has a positive attitude. Her cheerful mindset is infectious, and she brightens up Connors every day with her constant smiling. Outside of school, Harper loves to play soccer, is in gymnastics, and performs with the Hoboken Children's Theater. She has previously participated in five theater shows, Frozen, James and the Giant Peach, Flag Stanley, Dear Edwina, and Willy Wonka. Her dedication to performing and rehearsing is impressive. Her favorite subjects are ELA, math, and music. She plays the clarinet ukulele as an end is in the chorus with Mr. Azardo. Harper is always a thoughtful and caring friend. She is an excellent listener. She always tries to include everyone and everything that they are playing. One of her close friends, Abby, shared that Harper is a good friend because she is kind and takes interest in everything we share with her, even if it's something that's not that interesting. Her other friend, Charlotte, stated that Harper is a good friend because she's always there for me, no matter what. It's hard for me to believe that Harper is a fifth grader at Connors and that she will be moving on to Hoboken Middle School next year. It makes me so proud to see the wonderful young lady that Harper has become while she has been at Connors. She exemplifies every character trait of a Connors koala, and we could not be more proud of her as she is so deserving of this award. And everyone, please join me in a round of applause for Harper Appel. We're so proud of you, Harper. So we're going to be honoring our January Student of the Month at the March Board Meeting. So at this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Martin Shannon, the principal of Wallace Elementary School.
Thank you, Principal Addy. Good evening, everyone. We are here tonight to celebrate John McHugh, our Wallace School Student of the Month for December 2023. John is a first-grade student in Ms. Wallett's and Mrs. Cooper's class at Wallace. He has made so much growth since the start of the school year. John is always polite, kind to others, hardworking, and compassionate. John transitions well from task to task, takes redirection and focusing seriously, and because of this, he has shown a lot of academic and personal growth. He jumps up to help others in need and always uses his manners. As John's principal, I appreciate his hard work, caring nature, and willingness to connect with peers and adults alike. His combination of empathy and diligence is the perfect complement to our school. I am proud to be his principal. John has many interests, one being skiing. He also loves to play with friends and read fiction. When asked about what John loves about being a Wildcat, he said, "I love my teachers, I love my friends, and I love learning." It is my pleasure to present to you John McHugh for the December Student of the Month for the Wallace Elementary School. Let's hear it for John. Great job, John. Next, we are going to celebrate Maya McKendra. Maya McKendra is a fifth-grade student at Wallace Elementary School. She was nominated by Mrs. Martinez for excelling in all subject areas and for impressively contributing to the learning culture of the classroom community. During her academic career to date, Maya has earned a place on the honor roll and has been enrolled in the John Hopkins Center for Talented Youth Math Program for two years. Not only is Maya an outstanding student academically, she also contributes to the class and school community as well. Last year, she was part of the kindness crew, who were responsible for making sure younger students who were tardy would be escorted to their classrooms. This year, Maya was nominated by her classmates to be the class representative and a peer leader. Class representatives and peer leaders are students who are engaged with service incentives in our Wallace community to make the school a better environment for all students. One incentive that Maya was instrumental in is the Snacks for All program, in which healthy snacks are provided for students who did not come to school with a snack. Her hobbies are singing, art, reading graphic novels, playing with her sister and friends, piano, basketball, and she is a Girl Scout. Maya's favorite subjects are math and art. Maya would like to attend a university close to home like Princeton, Stevens Institute, or NYU, and wants to do one, and one day, or wants to become one or even many of the following: an engineer, an artist, dancer, singer, mathematician, or the first female president of the United States. To sum up her outlook, I would like to share a quote that Maya firmly believes and follows. "Do your best, forget the rest." Let's hear it for Maya, a January Student of the Month. Great job, John. Great job, Maya. Next, I would like to welcome Principal Sorofin to the screen.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon, and good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ivan Queros, Hoboken Middle School's Student of the Month for December. Ivan, a sixth-grade student, has quickly become a role model for his fellow Tigers since joining us just a few short months ago. He was nominated by Ms. Moore and Mr. Horranga for his outstanding work ethic, perseverance, effort, and kindness. Ms. Moore, Ivan's ELA teacher, commends his hard work this school year, particularly noting his reading capabilities and courage to read in front of others. She describes Ivan as diligent in completing all of his work on time, taking pride in everything he does, and giving 100% effort every day. Mr. Horranga adds that Ivan is respectful of all peers, teachers, and administration, and participates actively in math class every day. Ms. Reyes Gavilan, who teaches pre-AP dance and physical education, praises Ivan as responsible, prepared, and eager to learn in both courses. She highlights his positive demeanor, noting that he motivates his classmates by always being inclusive and kind in his interactions. Ms. Berloff shares those sentiments and adds that Ivan is always willing to help his teachers and friends, making him a valuable friend to have. Ivan's friend Moses describes him as a good friend and one of the smartest people he knows. Another classmate mentions that Ivan is a nice person, always attentive, and teaches, and is overall amazing. Outside of school, Ivan enjoys art and consistently impresses his teachers and friends with his credible artwork and vast knowledge of the subject. Ms. Wayland, our pre-AP visual arts teacher, describes Ivan as curious and well-mannered, a well-mannered young man who contributes positively in class discussions and activities. When asked about being recognized as student of the month, Ivan expressed feeling proud of himself for his hard work and appreciates the recognition. Ivan, we are proud to recognize you here tonight for your hard work. Please join me in celebrating Ivan Queros as Hoboken Middle School's Student of the Month for December. Round of applause. Great job, Ivan. And next, for, I'd like to welcome Elias Gavin as Hoboken Middle School's Student of the Month for January. Eli, a seventh-grade student, was nominated by Mr. Englis for his outstanding qualities as a positive role model for his peers. He consistently uses his time in class to support other students who need extra help, demonstrating both kindness and dedication to his academic responsibilities. Ms. Painter commended Eli for his leadership skills during a recent mock trial in ELA, where he played a pivotal role in his group's success by effectively presenting evidence and guiding his peers. In math class, Eli's curiosity for learning is evident, and his active participation enriches classroom discussions, benefiting the entire learning community. He approaches every assignment with pride and a desire to grow, setting a high standard for his classmates to follow. Eli's classmates also admire his work ethic and his character. Alec Fennell describes him as diligent and efficient, never rushing through his work and always putting out a great finished product. Nora Block praises Eli's determination and dedication to doing the right thing. Even when faced with challenges, you can always count on Eli for help. Beyond academics, Eli enjoys playing tennis and reading, and when asked about this honor, Eli shared his thoughts on education. This is a quote from Eli. "Education is not about finding success, it's about powering you with the resources to achieve the opportunity of a lifetime." Well said, well said, Eli. In recognition of his exemplary qualities and contributions to our school community, Eli Gavin is a deserving recipient of the Student of the Month Award. His embodiment of tiger pride is a testament to his character and sets a positive example for his peers. Please join me in celebrating Eli Gavin as our January Student of the Month. Great job to Ivan and Eli. We look forward to taking that picture tomorrow. And without further ado, I'd like to welcome Ms. Robin Piki-Pietra, the principal of Hoboken High School.
Good evening, everyone. Vice Principal Williams here. I'll be presenting our December Student of the Month. Joining me in congratulating Julia Critts, class of 2024. She is our December Student of the Month. Where does one begin when speaking about Julia? She's a true gem in all areas, from academics to co-curricular activities. She graduates in June, but she has not stopped pushing herself and pursuing learning. She has taken AP coursework from freshman year and will finish her senior year with over 11 AP courses taken. She has earned high honor roll distinction in every quarterly marking period since she has begun high school. Ms. Gleason shared that she has come to know Julia to be a bubbly and outgoing person who is passionate in her learning and in her extracurricular activities. Julia came to us from a very small local charter school and jumped right into her new environment with enthusiasm. She strives for high achievement and also sets clear goals for herself. She's energetic and committed, and her involvement in both school-related and outside activities are a testament to her eclectic personality and interests. Julia has been involved in a number of diverse extracurricular activities. Some of her extracurricular activities, to name a few, are Literary Magazine, where she is the editor-in-chief, National Honor Society, Student Government, and Chorus. Julie has spent a great deal of time working with our competitive debate groups, which include Harvard Model Congress, Model United Nations, and Mock Trial. With Mock Trial, the team won a county championship multiple years. From among the Harvard Model Congress students, Julia was selected to go to Spain, where the group would debate with teams from around the world, which is happening in March. Last summer, Julia participated in the University of Maryland Young Scholars Program. In addition to the program, she also took an international relations course and received an A. I have absolutely no doubt this girl will change the world for the better. Julia is a bright, promising, and young, talented person who tirelessly pursues her goals and passions. She is outspoken, energetic, and expressive. Julia is an asset to every classroom and activity in which she is involved. Once again, please join me congratulating Julia Critts for December Student of the Month. For our January Student of the Month, I'm going to pass it over to Vice Principal Ponse.
Good evening. Today, we are here to celebrate Gabriel Brody. He is a sophomore at Hoboken High School, and he is a January Student of the Month. Gabriel came to us in September from the Franklin School, and we are sure glad he did. He is an impressive student with a GPA of 4.4 and a full schedule of AP and pre-AP coursework. Mr. Munro shared that he is a student athlete and a leader on and off the field. He is a red-wing soccer player and a great student. He is diligent, punctual, and always engaged in instruction. Ms. Stevens, Gabriel's pre-AP English teacher, said Gabe is kind, funny, and persistent. He always participates in class, adding to discussion and enhancing analysis. He is consistent with his work and demonstrates effort. He also adds that classroom environment by chatting, being friendly to all, and putting people at ease. He is willing to help out, answer questions for classmates, and he is a well-rounded student who is an asset in the classroom. Mr. Turaskowitz, his AP history teacher, said Gabe is hard-working, intelligent, and a kind young man. He is always prepared to class and supportive for his classmates. He has a positive attitude and is committed to learning. Lastly, Mr. Lebag said, "He is a modeled AP bio teacher, a student. He is one of the most frequent participants in class. He always completes his work with high level of detail, excels in exam, and is always prepared for class. I couldn't be prouder of his work and dedication for my course. I am sure it will all pay off when he takes the AP Bio exam later this year." Gabriel is also in Mr. Fernandez's Innovative Science class, as he has been working very hard on different ideas they could market. Overall, we are so happy that Gabriel chose Hoboken High School. He is a valuable asset to our climate and culture, and he is a true definition of a wet wing. I am confident that we will be hearing more great things from Gabriel in the future. Congratulations, Gabriel. And I would like to give us a round of applause for Gabriel, our Student of the Month for January.
Congratulations to all of the Students of the Month. We are all very, very proud of you and all of your efforts, and we ask that you continue doing all of these things that have earned you this recognition and continue to contribute in a positive fashion to our school community. We appreciate each and every one of you. So that concludes our student recognitions for the evenings, and we'll be moving into our reports. Dr. Johnson, do you have a superintendent's report for this evening?
I do. I have one item that I'd like to discuss.
Great.
Okay, so, good evening. The one item that I would like to discuss is on the agenda this evening. Actually, it has to do with two resolutions that are there. Resolution 13.03 and 13.04. 13.03 is for the approval to submit a long-range facilities plan amendment for the purpose of the Wallace Trailers, and 13.04 for the approval to submit a project application for the removal and replacement of the existing classroom trailers at Wallace Elementary. So I'd like to take a little bit of time and just provide some background and some additional relevant information. The trailers that are currently at Wallace were placed there in the summer of 2004, and they will be 20 years old in the summer. There are currently, there are currently four classrooms that are on-site, and as a result of proper maintenance of those units, their useful life has been extended beyond what it was originally intended. As a result, we are kind of at a point now where those four trailers do, in fact, need to be replaced with new modular classrooms. We have priced out both We have priced out both, uh, one-story modular classrooms for just four of them, but we have also priced out two-story modular unit to maximize the footprint, on which they sit thereby giving us eight classrooms as opposed to four. Uh, in addition to the need to replace the aging four trailers, it would greatly help our growing pre-K and enrollment, enrollment growth by adding the four additional classrooms on the existing site. This would enable us to relocate four pre-K classrooms out of what will most likely be Brand Elementary School. Uh, we did explore having a three-story modular classroom unit placed there. Um, but the standard for modular units, uh, as, uh, the one that we are looking at is actually a two-story unit, not a three-story. Uh, plus for preschool, we cannot go higher than two stories anyway. Um, and if we were actually constructing a building as opposed to bringing a modular unit, um, we could go higher potentially, um, and put some possibly kindergarten classrooms there, but it would require a much longer period of time. It would require us to bond for the project. It would require a referendum. It would require a major traffic study in an area, particularly in already congested, um, city block. So for right now, uh, we believe that the most cost-effective and most expeditious way to get four, uh, additional pre-K classrooms out of one of our elementary schools and to replace existing tra-trailers that are, um, really in need of, um, a replacement is to have this, uh, modular unit project move forward. The purchase of the modular unit that we're looking at with, uh, the eight classrooms, um, is estimated to cost approximately three point six million dollars. This three point six million dollars includes two point eight million dollars for the purchase of the unit itself. Um, and that includes an additional, uh, or it includes eight hundred thousand dollars for the removal of the old trailers. It also includes the soil testing that's needed, and it includes all of the relevant soft costs that are associated with the project. Um, we would be purchasing the modular unit from, uh, Modular Genius. They are a member of the Keystone Purchasing Cooperative Network. We would use subcontractors on the state contract, uh, list to do plumbing, electric tech, et cetera. And this would ensure that the project moves as quickly as possible and that we meet all of the bidding and procurement laws. Um, as soon as we found out that we were going to explore this option, um, our entire administrative team, under the leadership of, uh, our business administrator and our assistant business administrator, worked diligently to achieve budgetary savings, uh, throughout this second portion of, of the school year and, um, began to really tighten our belt, um, in order to bring the project forward to the board and to the taxpayers. So one of the things that we plan to do is to deposit three point six million dollars into capital reserve from the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget during the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget process. This will ensure that the project does not have a tax impact. Um, it's important to note that these classrooms, um, will also, in fact, generate rental revenue. It will take, um, approximately four years. Um, based on the rental income that we will take in from these, uh, trailers to pay for, um, the actual project, and then anything beyond the four years will, um, just be rental revenue after that. So, um, but again, there would be no, um, tax impact, um, as a result of this project a-at all. The money would be deposited into capital reserve, and it would be taken out of capital reserve to cover the cost of the trailers themselves. Um, they have to be replaced. They, they, they just, you know, have hit their twenty-year lifespan. Uh, there's four classrooms out there, and they would be replaced with eight classrooms. The modular units will sit on the same exact footprint that are out there right now. Um, like I said, instead of four, there will be eight classrooms, um, stacked on, on top of each other. There will be, uh, eight classrooms that are nine hundred and fifty square feet, meeting the preschool, uh, requirements. Each classroom will have a bathroom inside, which also meets the requirements. The modular unit will also include an internal full-size elevator and meet all ADA requirements. The architect will submit an updated long-range facilities plan to the New Jersey Department of Education and get approval for the project right after your approval. Um, and our early, our Director of Early Childhood Education and Assistant Superintendent will begin working with preschool licensing to ask the appropriate questions. Our facilities director will begin conversations with the city, um, once we have board approval. Geotechnical testing and surveying will then take place, and physical work on the project will begin the day that school ends and will take place over the summer. It is anticipated that the new modular units will be delivered over the summer months and installed and open and ready for the first days. So that's the plans for the replacement of the existing trailers that are on the Wallace site. So if anyone has any questions, we'd certainly be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you so much for your report, Dr. Johnson. We greatly appreciate it. We're going to move on to committee reports. Ms. Good, do you have a business administrator's report for us this evening? Ms. Good, you're on mute.
Um, I will be presenting the preliminary budget to the finance committee at our next meeting, which will take place a little earlier, um, in the month, um, than it usually does. I will go over all the details of the budget. Um, I will highlight, um, how much money we have in our reserve accounts. And like Dr. Johnson said, um, the plan is to budget the new trailer project into the budget, so it does not have a tax impact, um, on the taxpayers of Hoboken. I will keep you updated and informed as we move forward with this project. Anything that, um, comes up, um, that is, that may be unusual, I will inform you, and, um, we will not only inform you, but we will let you know, um, the decisions we made. So, looking forward to, to presenting the preliminary budget to you, um, probably in about two weeks. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Good. We appreciate it. Uh, now we will move on to curriculum. Mr. Grana, your turn.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. So, um, uh, the curriculum committee met. We talked about, um, really two key actionable items. You'll find it in the agenda under nine dot oh one, oh two, oh three, oh four, and oh five. Um, the request from the administration, um, this is not an approval. This is just a administratively to proceed with the submission for, uh, six, six different, excuse me, five different grants, um, that will range from expanding access to climate change, uh, international baccalaureate courses. There are a number of, of, um, I would call them business-as-usual activities, and, uh, I would encourage all trustees to approve them as business-as-usual. Included in that will be our upcoming field trips, um, which we will provide. Some are funded by HPEF. So those are the actual items for trustees. Um, we also had a interesting conversation about, um, progress. Uh, this is not actual progress as a district. Uh, we are seeing our steam tank teams moving and advancing to regionals. We have ten from Brand, eight from Connors, eight from Wallace, thirty-six from HMS, and four from HHS. We have sixty-six teams in total. Um, uh, this is, it's really just kind of another set of, of, of good news. Um, and I would like to zero in and highlight on one, which is a new study that has come out from Stanford University. And this is something we spend a lot of time talking about, which is the impact of COVID on our students, uh, collectively and across the country. Um, if you, if you want to, you know, if the public can see this, you can see this by going to the New York Times and searching on Stanford University Study of School Districts. But I think what's important about it is, is that, you know, a lot of districts see a pause, um, in results during COVID. Some high-performing districts, um, were high-performing. They kind of flatlined during, during COVID, and, but they remained high-performing, and they're continuing to be high-performing. Um, you would expect that for more, perhaps more affluent districts or, uh, districts with the resources. What is so satisfying is that our district is continuing to rise in performance, um, all the way from before the pandemic and into this year, and we're continuing to rise. And we are above, performing above the US average and the New Jersey average. So this is really good news for our district. There is nothing actionable there, but I thought that, uh, trustees and public might want, um, to take advantage of looking at that information in the times if they wish. Thanks. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Mr. Grania. Much appreciated. We will now move on to facilities and Mr. De La Torre.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, the facilities committee met on Wednesday, February seventh. In attendance were Dr. Johnston, Dr. Johnson, Mr. Callagie, Ms. Angley, and Ms. Delara. All agenda items were discussed, and we recommend all for approval. Couple of notes, uh, one, we're very happy to report that the Hoboken Family Alliance will be holding their thirteenth annual bike camp in June at Hoboken High School. Uh, congratulations on this great contribution to our community. Uh, second, we're also very happy to report that on Sunday, July twenty-first, at Tagliari Stadium, uh, it will be the site of the Daniel Jones Youth Football Camp. Uh, more details to come for both events. And as stated earlier in Dr. Johnson's report, agenda item thirteen point oh three is directly related to thirteen point oh four, the removal and replacement of classroom trailers at Wallace Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De La Torre. Next, we will move on to finance with Ms. Kana.
Good evening, everyone. The finance committee met on Thursday, February eighth, at ten fifteen AM. In attendance were Mr., were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. Angley, Mr. Clubfeld, Ms. Good, and myself. We reviewed and recommend all agenda items in sections eleven, twelve, and fourteen. I'd like to thank Kate Jacobs for her donation of a portable platform stage for the Hoboken High School. And then one last item I'd like to point out in the grants, uh, fourteen point oh six. We have an approval to accept one million dollars through the SDA Fiscal Year Twenty-four Emergent Capital Maintenance Needs Grant Program. The district is determining the best way to utilize these funds for our facilities. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kana. Moving on to governance with Ms. Katamatory.
Thank you, Ms. McGurk. Um, good evening, everyone. The governance committee met on Wednesday, February seventh, two thousand twenty-four. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Clubfeld, Ms. Norwood, Ms. McGurk, and myself, Ms. Katamatory. Uh, as is typical, the committee discussed all agenda items and recommends all for approval. As is typical throughout the school year, there are a number of appointments, resignations, leave requests, schedule modifications and transfers, uh, of staff and faculty between the schools, as well as, uh, determining some equivalency increases and approval of new substitutes on the agenda. Of note on tonight's agenda, um, ten point oh one, the resignation or retirement of, uh, Ms. J. Sri Amin, who has been a chemistry teacher at the high school for nineteen years as of the end of this school year. She will be retired. We thank her for her service to our students and wish her must, much rest and relaxation in her well-deserved retirement. Um, ten point oh three amongst the appointments, we have two music teachers who have been appointed for this school year. Um, Chris Dragati for Brand, as well as Joshua Ideo for Hoboken High School. Ten point oh four covers three new teachers for the, for next school year, uh, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year for first grade dual language, for our first grade dual language program, which began this year and is doing very well. Uh, ten point ten includes the approval of changes to certain staff members' schedules. I only mention this because it's to allow these individuals to attend college courses. And I'd just like to say we wish these employees much luck in those endeavors, um, as they continue their education. Ten point fourteen through ten point eighteen cover various appointments and stipends, compensations for the current and next school year in various areas and for various programs, including Passport to Learning, Family Curriculum Night, and the Athletic Department. Ten point nineteen covers the approval of volunteers to support our theater program. I just want to say very quickly, we like to thank these unpaid, mostly parent volunteers for their invaluable service when it comes to the theater program and all the wrangling and other work that they do, um, just for the pleasure of seeing their children. And that is, uh, my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katamatory. And I, um, have a brief president's report for this evening, because we will be going into executive session. Um, I did want to recognize all of the fabulous students who participated in the district-wide talent show on Friday. There were thirty-five acts, including several of our staff members. And I know that I speak up ahead of everyone who is in attendance, that the talent on display from kindergarten right through twelfth grade was really just amazing. And to see so many very young students come out and share their talents on a big stage in front of a big roomful of people is so encouraging. But a very, very special thank you to Ms. Miller and the Fine and Performing Arts Department for organizing, um, to Mr. Stasiak for running the sound, also to Ms. Drumgul, Ms. Eberhart, and Mr. Munoz for judging. Um, not something that I would have been able to do, because there was just so much talent, but we appreciate them taking time out of their Friday to, uh, you know, contribute to this wonderful thing for arts in our district. In terms of a topic that has come up in the president's report, um, over the last couple of months is the situation with the pilot from seven seventy, uh, Jackson Street, which we have been hoping for a resolution on. We have had meetings with the administration, city council, and charter school representatives, and it is my hope that we are on the road to a resolution in the coming months. So there will be more to come on that. And then finally, one note on the construction of the modular classrooms behind Wallace. I think this is a really positive step for our district to be able to help relieve some of the crowding of preschool pla-classrooms in our district buildings that are, are really our elementary schools for our K to five students. And also, um, being able to do this without a budgetary or tax impact is something that is, is really wonderful. So we're grateful to, um, everyone who's worked so hard to come up with this solution and who has, uh, everyone who's from Dr. Johnson, Ms. Good, Mr. Callagie, who've worked very hard to make sure that this will be a solution that'll be ready for students in September. Um, next, that concludes my report. Next, we'll go into public comments on agenda.
Ms. McGurk, did you want a wellness report?
Oh, my God, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Yes. My apologies. That will conclude my president's report, and we will move over to Ms. Norwood for wellness.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Madam President. The Wellness Committee met on Wednesday, February seventh. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. McGurk, Mr. De La Torre, Ms. Delara, and myself. There are no wellness items on the agenda for approval. However, the committee did discuss a number of district initiatives and other items. The district is considering joining a newly expanded middle school athletic conference for school year twenty-four, twenty-five. The middle school athletic conference is being expanded to include Eastern Bergen County districts and Hudson County districts. The conference will consist of three divisions set up to minimize student travel time to away games. And the sports the district will participate in are still being considered, but will likely be sports for which the district already has high school teams. Sports being considered include soccer, basketball, baseball, softball, cross-country, track, volleyball, cheerleading, and bowling. A meeting was held between Hoboken, Weehawken, and Secaucus about the possibility of forming a tri-op for ice hockey. All three districts are in favor of this arrangement. It would need to be approved by the NJIIHL and then by the NJSIAA prior to it being approved by all three boards of education. This try-up would allow practice time on the ice rink in Secaucus, which would help reduce the program costs. As part of the district's efforts to promote a culture of kindness, that fostering positive, caring, and respectful school environments, students recently participated in the Great Kindness Challenge, earning district schools the designation of kindness-certified schools. The district has requested its food service provider, Chartwells, to conduct a food service survey of all families, as well as of middle school and high school students. Surveys such as this are done periodically to identify any areas for potential improvement in student satisfaction with the food quality and offerings. with the food quality and offerings. Chronic absenteeism has become an issue in all school districts across the state. The district has become and begun an attendance initiative in all schools and wants to remind parents that it is important for students to attend school daily and be on time. The state deems students truant after 10 unexcused absences per year. A project is underway to revise and expand the HMS Personal Growth Period to engage the students in a comprehensive advisory program. The plan is to integrate the current Tiger Talks with half-day sessions aligned with real-time issues. Assemblies and additional periods will be added for follow-up and reinforcement. An interactive website is being developed by the Special Services Team for the Life Skills and Transition Community-Based Instruction Work Experience Program. The website is intended to aid parents in understanding the curriculum and programs available through the district and related county programs for qualifying students up to age 21. And finally, based on its success at HMS and HHS, the Best Buddies Program, which supports inclusion for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, is being expanded to the elementary schools. If you have any additional questions, um, please let us know. Thank you very much. And that completes my report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Norwood. And again, my apologies. It was a little bit different getting used to going back into using Zoom. So now we are going to move to public comments on agenda items. I believe we have a couple of speakers signed up. But before we move forward with that, a reminder before we open public comments. Over the years and more recently, the board has been asked why it does not prohibit or stop comments about school district employees from individuals who speak during the public comment portion of our meeting. The short answer is that the law prevents the board from censoring comments made about district personnel. The board does not condone, nor is the board a party to comments as such. However, just because a speaker may have the right to say what he or she feels, it does not absolve the speaker from liability for any comments that could be viewed as defamatory by an employee. Should speakers say something that subjects them to a civil suit, the responsibility falls squarely on the speaker and not on the board. Board policy requires that all speakers please state your name, municipality of residence, and business affiliation, if any. Speakers are allowed five minutes, and uh I believe we're going to have a timer on the screen that will let people uh know how much time they have left. And finally, please address all comments to the chair. That's me. Board policy states that the board welcomes comments on matters of interest to the board, but this is not an opportunity for dialogue or debate between speakers and board members or the superintendent. Ms. Good or Ms. Lopez, who is our first speaker?
Yes, we have two speakers signed up for the first public comment. Um, I will open them up to turn on their microphone uh when I call their name. The first speaker is Patricia Waiters. Give me just one moment. Ms. Waiters, you should be able to, okay.
Did you hear me, Ms. Lopez?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Hi, hi, Patricia Waiters. Good evening all. I hope you guys are staying safe. Um, I just learned minutes before the meeting that it was via Zoom. Just uh in the near future, when it's implement weather like this, I mean, people didn't expect you guys to have a meeting at all. So I'm not really prepared, but what I am prepared for is um the Wellness Committee, um, was Ms. Hannah? Am I saying? The the who's in charge of the Wellness Committee that just gave the speech? Hello? Ms. Norwood, um, the next time, could you please like identify? You gave abbreviations for those programs that you um spoke about, and members of the public would definitely want to know what that means. I mean, I haven't read it, but you just gave only the abbreviations. And um with the 3-point something million dollars for those trailers and backup wireless, did you guys, um, I hope that was an open and fair bid process, and I will be meeting with you, Ms. Good, if it's okay. So I won't have dialogue going back and forth. I have a lot of questions before you pronounce uh and introduce your preliminary budget. A lot of questions and concerns with respect to night is a little different. You said that the 3-point something million went in savings. So I'm not going to use my five minutes on that. But what I am going to use my five minutes on is I spoke briefly to you, Madam President, when we was leaving the last meeting. We met me and another parent and another young man. We asked you and addressed the situation of the new coach coming into our district, and you really couldn't talk to us about it. You suggested we go speak with Ms. Johnson. Um, I did reach out, but you know, I let everything play out. So I don't know this new coach. I don't know if he was on the agenda tonight. And um I would definitely love to meet him and, you know, the other parents that had concerns. And did you guys already appoint him and where we at with the coach situation? And um that's basically it. Oh, and about the swimming program, I'm sorry. The swimming program, is it private or can all our public school kids attend with the um swimming program on the weekends? Thank you. I'll wait back for the public portion.
Ms. Good, just of note, there are swim, or Ms. Good, Ms. Waiters. Of note, there are swim hours that are open to the public at Hoboken High School. I don't have the schedule handy in front of me, but I'd be more than happy to make sure that makes it to you. That's open to anyone who lives in Hoboken. What's on the agenda tonight is um Special Olympics Swimming run through Hoboken Family Alliance, I believe, for special needs students. Um, so I'm not exactly sure on who that is open to. Um, Dr. Johnson may be able to fill us in a little bit more. And yes, the football coach is on tonight's agenda for approval, and there have been a couple of meetings with football parents thus far. So Dr. Johnson, um, could you speak to the Hoboken Family Alliance Swim Program? Because I'm not clear on all the details for that.
Thank you, Madam President, for your professionalism and your information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the swim program that we're having on Saturdays, are you referring to that?
I'm not sure whether she meant the one that we're hosting on Saturdays that's open community-wide or what's on tonight's agenda, which is swim for Special Olympics for Hoboken Family Alliance.
I can't, I can't speak to the Hoboken Family Alliance. Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Waiters.
We may have lost Ms. Waiters. We can get the information over to her.
Not the Family Alliance, ma'am.
Okay, so the the Saturday um swim program that we have is open to all Hoboken residents. Um, we made sure when we put the dates for that swim program up that we advertised it to um the entire city. And I did make sure that I also sent it to um all of the um uh Hoboken um Housing Authority Commissioners, as well as to uh Danny and Mark Greco to distribute to the Housing Authority residents to ensure that, you know, everyone that lived in the Housing Authority knew that the program was open to all residents as well. Um, so the the dates and the times, um, there's there's only one portion of that program, and I think it's the first hour that's like a sensory safe uh swim program, and it's for special needs children. Um, and it's it's the first hour, but then after that, it's it's an open swim time um for for families and children.
Thank you so much for clarifying, Dr. Johnson. Um, now moving on to our next speaker, Ms. Lopez.
Yes, our next speaker is Manuel Rivera Soler. Manuel, are you able to unmute?
I believe so. Can you hear me?
We can hear, yes, we can hear.
Thank you and good evening, uh, Madam President and uh trustees. Um, once again, thank you for holding this meeting, um, even though it's adverse uh situation here, um, but we appreciate. As uh my question here, because this is agenda, I should have just stepped to one, but um, I just want to follow up on more questions. I know it's not a question and answer, but I just want to throw a question or the 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 uh opinion out there. Um, in regards to the modulators that were mentioned, um, for the Wallace School, the modulators will be purchased again, uh, um through a company or someone that we have purchased before, or was that a bid? Secondly, um, the ones that are there at current time, would those be removed and discarded, or would those be removed and auctioned? Or, you know, any 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 information in regards to the old ones? Um, also, I would like to know, since we're in the same theme, I did not hear mention tonight being that there was a lot of conversation in regards to the infrastructure, um, in regards to the scaffolding. Again, I ask, um, for the uh uh our beautiful building there that I think we've we're going on a year. And uh if you, if anyone could, um, again, give a little update, um, either here or in the website, uh, again, I never am able to find it, but um, if information can be given there on that, as well as, um, again, um, when you say you are speaking on the pilots, I don't know if it's in agenda, but somebody mentioned it. I think it was you, Madam President, um, um, for 770 House, how how is it that, um, still to this date, the administration, is it, are they, um, are they being uncooperative, or are they just, um, giving us, yes, you're going to get some pilot within X amount of time, because uh with the investment here in the modulators, um, that is uh that is money that I'm sure we're going to need, um, back in the um funds. And uh again, uh, these are my questions and uh, oh, oh, as well as, I'm sorry, Madam, Madam President, um, if anybody wants to answer, but I'll just keep rattling them off. Uh, I know that, I think you've mentioned it before, when, and congratulations to the retiree. Um, when when we have retirees and um people who resign, again, I think you you or someone said it at another meeting, it's one V one, right? Somebody, somebody retires or or or, you know, just doesn't, you know, want to work, but we get another, we hire someone else. Is that, is that also correct? If you could just let me know. If I think it is, but I I'm not so sure. And then I'll just leave the rest, um, for a quick uh on the non-agenda. So, um, Madam President, with that, I I yield back if uh if there's anything that could be could be given. By the way, I'm just just going by what was said today, because I also couldn't, my fault, not yours, uh, couldn't print out the the agenda, but that's that's okay. Uh, uh, thank you, Madam President. I yield back. And again, thank you for holding the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Soler. Um, in reference to the chemistry teacher, I, speaking as someone who was terrible at chemistry in high school, I'm sure there are students who hope that she would not be replaced. But yes, they're going to need to hire a chemistry teacher for the high school because it's essential to make sure students have a foundation in um all areas of the sciences. So there will have to be someone replacing Ms. Amin teaching chemistry once she retires this June. Regarding the modular classrooms that are going to go uh at the site at Wallace, those are being purchased through a cooperative, and I'm going to actually hand it over to Ms. Good if you could just give a brief few words on what that means when something is purchased through a cooperative.
Okay, um, this is not a bid process. So it's, there is no advertisement for the purchase and or for this project. We are purchasing or we are hiring the vendors off of a state contract list through a co-op, and we are um members of several co-ops. So all the work done by any and all um parties related to the trailer project will be state contract vendors. Um, if you have any questions about the state contract vendor that will be hired, because they will be hired on the board agenda um to do the work, um, then their state contract number uh will also be on the board agenda. So um, we are fully transparent um on this project. If there's any questions, you can certainly reach out to either Dr. Johnson, um, Mr. Callagie, and or myself, and we will answer all the questions to the best of our ability.
You are breaking up, Joyce. I don't know if it's just me who's hearing that.
Oh, okay. So can you hear me?
Yes, I I appreciate it, Ms. Good. No one is doubting the sincerity and the honesty of the board. It was just a question.
Okay.
Okay, and and as well as uh, as well as the 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 ones that are game retired, that it was just, you know, putting one and two together, you know?
We we want to make sure that your questions are answered. And in regards to your last question, which is about scaffolding at Hoboken Middle School, it was my understanding from the facilities director as well as from our architects that it did need to stay up through four seasons. We're obviously kind of at the end of that fourth season. What is going to happen next is that a forensic engineer will have to come out and look at the building and determine um what can be restored, and also looking into how all of this will get paid for. So I'm sure we'll have a lot more to say about it. Um, I know that, you know, seeing scaffolding around a building is something that no one really likes, but the most important thing is that we keep everyone safe as they go in and out of Hoboken Middle School. So thank you so much for your questions. Um, we are going to move into our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion. Motion. Second, Dan. I have a motion in a second. Can I do a roll call?
Yes, please, Ms. Good.
Ms. Angley.
Yes.
Ms. Katamatory.
Yes.
Ms. Delara.
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre.
Yes.
Mr. Grana.
Yes.
Ms. Kana.
Yes.
Mr. Clubful.
Yes.
Ms. Norwood.
Yes.
Ms. McGurk.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Good. We will now move into public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Um, Ms. Lopez.
Yes, again, we have two speakers. The first will be uh Ms. Waiters.
Thank you again, Patricia Waiters, 1219 Willow. Um, a member of the public that just spoke, I must respectfully disagree. I mean, your opinion is yours, mine is mine. I do question the integrity of the board on certain issues. Uh, the scaffold being one, number two, open and fair bidding. Ms. Good just emphasized that it's not a bid, but I don't know if you guys familiar with what just took place with HUD and those 70 people with the contracts with respect to a fair and open contract. So if we do question that, because we know you might not admit it, guys, but I want this placed on the record on the public portion that our town is very political, and everything is politically stricken, even though you said it's not the same thing with the new school issue. So when we ask, we don't ask to disrespect none of you board members. What we ask is that you have integrity and be transparent and be honest with us. Because with that 770 project money, I stood out there. I was there, and I was shocked to see uh uh the non-for-profit, which is the Hoboken Board of Education Foundation, was there, and it was very political, and it's so long, and it speaks for itself. There's no way y'all couldn't have split that money by now, and we already did. The the pilot was already done months, I mean, years ago. And it does question the integrity of this city when they want to play politics every time there's an election. Because you see the same people in City Hall and the same games being played, and members of the public like us is being impacted. And the ones that have our school kids in this district. And uh another thing that's very important, those three trailers are out and behind Wallace. You, since it wasn't a bid, can we get access to the contractors that's going to do that through the facility director? Uh, to to do Mr. Callagie? I need to see a copy of that, please. And Ms. Good, I definitely want to ask you with respect, so I don't want to put it on the record on the public portion. Could you please make time to meet with me before you introduce your preliminary budget? I would really appreciate that.
Okay, so Ms. Ms. Waiters, um, as far as meeting with you before I introduce my preliminary budget, the answer to that is the preliminary budget must be presented to the Finance Committee uh once Dr. Johnson and I go over the budget and come to an agreement on what will be presented. No one outside of the finance, no one outside of the Finance Committee, um, will have any access to any of the budget information until the budget is presented in public.
Okay, thank you. That's good. That's good. Long as it's all right. I'm satisfied. Thank you, Ms. Good. So I'll wait till next board meeting, next, uh, not this Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Okay.
Am I right? The next board meeting?
No, it's in March on the
It's in, it's in March. There will be a resi- It's, it's in, it's in March, there will be a resolution requesting permission for me to submit the, the, submit the budget to the county office for approval. Okay, the budget is still not a public document until the county office approves it.
Alright.
So, okay, so, once it's approved by the county office, then it becomes a public document.
Thanks for the clarification, and thank you, Madam President, you all guys, stay safe.
You too.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters, Ms. Lopez, do we have another member of the public signed up to speak?
Yes, we do, uh, Mr. Soler.
Yes, am I muted again?
Yes, you are.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lopez, um, Madam President, uh, once again, good evening to everyone. I'm not going to reiterate what I just said before, but I just want to ask everyone, how are you doing? Uh, it's an important question, uh, everybody should, every now and again, ask each other that question if you have the opportunity, because sometimes we're going through difficult situations, and, and we try to, uh, keep it together, but it's hard, and it's sometimes it's better when we speak to each other, and this is also an example for the school district, school district children, so they could also feel comfortable if, um, they sometimes don't feel okay to come out and speak, so I just wanted to throw that into the conversation this evening. Um, Madam President, um, I wanted to also, before I, I continue, I wanted to, um, again, uh, thank, uh, all of the volunteers, um, that are in the theatrical, um, uh, area for, uh, the children. Again, it is a great number of people, and that is, uh, that is wonderful to see, and, and want to thank each and every one of the volunteers, as well as, um, uh, the person who donated the, I believe, the stage, I, I couldn't write the name fast enough, but, uh, you know, much, much thanks to all of the people who volunteered, and again, all of you and, and everyone, so my, um, my concerns or, or my opinions here this evening, just, just when, again, um, when the question I asked was about the, the scaffolding, it was just because a, 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 a clarification of, you know, it has been there, and again, that I'm not rushing a process that, you know, if, if it's safety first, of course, but, um, this is, this is the reason to ask the question, so maybe we can get an answer, and again, Madam President, um, I do appreciate the efforts, um, that you and the board are, are doing to answer these questions, and, um, in regards to the budget, I, I just can't wait to see it. Um, I hope it, um, it, uh, it is an impressive one, and, uh, again, the pilots are very important, I try to speak on it wherever I can, especially in the council meetings, to help out that process, because, um, if we have more, um, more funds, I would hope that more important things can be done for the district, and, and the children could benefit on, on that regard, so I know that you will all be, um, pushing for this, and Madam President will, um, I'm sure it's something that, that, that you have, um, uh, a lot of concern of over and, and interest in resolving. So with that, again, uh, what was asked before, I, I have full faith, yes, some people do some, uh, wrong things, but I believe in, because of the, the eyes that are upon, uh, the district and all of us, I, I'm sure that things are, are going to try to be, uh, as transparent as possible. So I thank you for the time, uh, once again, God bless you, Madam President, God bless the board, God bless the Hoboken School District and all of us, and have a good evening, and, and I yield back.
Thank you, Mr. Soler.
One, one, one last thing, Madam President, if you're going on executive session, will you, will you, um, be, um, taking any action, so that either we can leave or not?
You beat me to the punch, um, we will not be taking any action as a result of this executive session, but we will be going into executive session now for the purpose of discussing matters covered by attorney-client privilege. Um, we will not be taking action, so we will just be coming back to close the meeting. I think we will be approximately forty-five minutes to an hour, um, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion.
Alrighty, board members, please, the, Vicky put the Zoom link in the chat for the executive session, so you will leave this Zoom, go to the second Zoom, and, uh, then we'll come back to this original Zoom link to close out the meeting, sounds good?
Okay.
See you all in a few.
With you. Don't we have to, don't we have, mm?
Yes.
Ms. Katamatori?
Yes.
Ms. Zelera?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Grana?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Clubful?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
It's eight twenty seven. We're in an executive session. So we'll leave this and go back to the other.
Back to the class.
Okay, wait, can you just put it on the chat, Vicki, again so we can just all log in? Thank you. Wait, why can't I get in?
Sounds like there was a party going on in here. All right, I think we have everyone. It is 9:42 PM and we are just returning from our executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
So motion.
Second. Ms. Good, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Angley?
Here.
No, no, to, um...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Ms. Katamatori?
Yes.
Ms. Delera?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Grana?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
Mr. Cluffel?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And with no further business, do I have a motion to close the meeting? Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you everybody.